...municipal annexation plan. And this plan deliberately gives the city as well as the residents some time to understand where the annexation is going to happen and how utilities and other services are going to be provided, starting with a three-year timeline. So that's the process. We began this process back in earnest, back in August of 2016. We have since coordinated with area utilities. We've coordinated with Wilson County. We have identified those properties that we know from the tax record that have agricultural exemptions, and we've offered all those properties a non-annexation development agreement, which is a kind of particularity in the law that allows ag exemptions, for example, to continue to remain in agricultural use despite the annexation for growth purposes of the city's boundary. So we have mailed out those agreements. We've provided the public notice as we're required to under the statute. And we have conducted an inventory and prepared a draft service plan. And we are here for the first of two public meetings to cover this annexation. And the main purpose is not so much for me to get up here and speak, but to allow those citizens who are affected by the annexation to tell you their thoughts and opinions. I will tell you that I have spoken with a number of residents, or citizens who have contacted me about this. At least one has stated that they believe it's a good thing, and it's due and it should be coming. I have heard from others that are concerned that they would lose their agricultural exemptions through the process, and I have informed them that that is not the case. And I have heard from others who have concerns about their annexation because they believe it would negatively affect their future plans for development or some of their current obligations. So I've heard multiple viewpoints, but it's best really, and part of this process why it's prescribed, is so that you hear it directly from the citizens. So with that, I'm going to step aside and allow, Mr. Mayor, you to allow people to come forward, and then I'll be available for questions if there are any at any time.
Okay. And I will, as we just did with citizen comments, if there are any citizens that have some issues with annexation that would like to come up to the microphone? Mayor, I need you to, for public hearing purposes, to read the caption next to that. Okay. For the purpose of considering annexation of approximately 1,600-plus acres of land in four general areas under the 2019 municipal annexation plan, generally described as follows: One, the US 181 corridor north, approximately 400, excuse me, 543 acres, from the current city limit at County Road 130 to County Road 131. Second, State Highway 97 east corridor, approximately 328 acres, from the current city limits east to the John Deere dealership. Also, number three, a 682.4-acre area along Goliad Road in between incorporated areas of the city and to the south, County Road 101 from the current city limits to the San Antonio River, and an area adjacent to the current city limits along State Highway 97. And four, a 43-acre area along US Highway 181, from the current city limit south to Katy Lane. Non-annexation development agreements are being offered to owners of the properties with agricultural exemption in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 43.035. Yes, sir.
Mayor? I'm David Walpole. I live right across from the Walmart Super Center. I counsel there. I know most of, all the people here in town. I was born and raised here. And when we first moved up there 15 years ago, it was a dirt road. There was nothing, you know? And I understand growth and everything, but y'all are all elected local people here, elected to the council and everything. I hope y'all can come up with a plan that will help people that already had all of the utilities in place that cost a couple of $10,000 for a septic system with a larger lateral line and everything else at the time up there. And, you know, water, yeah, lights and everything else, you know? You know, there is growth for the city of Florisville, and the man back there said pretty good. I'm just a low point boy, whatever. He said a lot better than I could say, you know? But everybody here is local. We all need to work together with a lot of issues. But spending money for something I've already put a lot of money into, it just don't make sense to me, being a working person, you know, to get what I got. I'm coming up to retirement age and everything else, and a lot of people, you know, are in that area too. So I wish y'all would take it under consideration. We pick up trash every day from Walmart. You know, there was an issue that it wasn't precinct 3 or whatever, or precinct, excuse me, precinct 1, it wasn't Albert, it wasn't the city. Walmart built the street. At the time, I walked out and asked them, hey, will y'all put a pipe in here? There is, there is a utility that's going to be put out here. There was no pipe put underground over there, to my knowledge. They tore out trees to put a covert on our side to drainage. Then it's set up there for, I think, about 10, I don't know, maybe a year. The existing park was never paid. The city wasn't going to pay that at the time. They didn't have the money at the time. So it stayed that way. So y'all being elected officials here in Florisville and being local, I hope y'all could take it into consideration that we already have it in. I fall short of the ags in. I've got six-point-something acres that joins back to Gettler Lumber. I'm going to be paying taxes on that and everything else. So I wish y'all would take it in consideration to waiver me something that I've already paid and my neighbors, you know? Look at all of the, look at all of the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Josie. I'm Josie Trevino. Currently, my husband and I, John Trevino, own three and a half acres that are on 181 South, going towards Pope, right across, right past Baharito Creek. His family has owned that property for many years. It was owned by Paul Sanders and John P. Sanders. And our concern is that currently, we have to run a PVC pipe across Baharito Creek. We're not allowed to have any other water service, and that every time it floods, my family has to go out there and fix the water line. And currently, my mother-in-law lives on the property. And that is always very disappointing. I'm glad that y'all are going through this process, but I'm very concerned as well because we currently have a lease with the fireworks. And if this goes through annexation, that would be a loss for us, which helps us, helped my family. And I really would like for y'all to take into consideration allowing the, I guess, the zone for the fireworks service to continue. And some of y'all may know this property as Nopalis. I know many families refer to this in the past as a place where families would congregate, but I would really like for y'all to take that into consideration. We were very disappointed because we're going to have to clean it out and do some other things that we have not been required, because it was always considered like a ranch, somewhere where my husband's family would spend the weekends and their holidays. But I definitely would like for y'all to take that into consideration, because we would take a loss, my husband and I, through this annexation. And that's an annual loss. And I have brought it up to Mr. Stewart, which has brought it up to Mrs. Turner.
Would that fall under grandfather? Because they've had this business going on for lots of years.
Well, fireworks, that's a pretty interesting situation, because fireworks have a special category in them.
They've had that business there for years and years.
So generally, when it's annexed, the land use is unaffected and can't be changed, but fireworks have special rules that the legislature sets up?
I understand, because, I mean, they're allowed because they're on the county. The city doesn't allow it.
Right.
So wouldn't that be the same as some type of ag exemption with a business exemption?
Again, generally, that's the rule, but with fireworks, it's a little bit different, and that's what the legislature has set up. But we've looked into the issue, and I know that we've all said that, you know, we'll do everything we can from the city's issue, and that's something that can be brought up with the zoning when the annexation occurs. It could potentially be zoned to still allow that use out there.
Okay. And then, like I said, I've really, I mean, if y'all are going to make any improvements, it's very disappointing that we have to run that line across Baharito Creek, and every time it floods, we, they have to spend money fixing it and repairing it, and it goes through the same process every time it rains. So...
Where's your water meter at?
I'm not sure. But even, I'm not sure even if the neighbor has to do the same thing. But yeah, we, my brother-in-law came to the city and to the county, and they informed him that there was no other way but to run it across the line, and they couldn't go through the other county service.
Well, that's the county now. Can we...
I have to look into that again.
Can we look into that, see where their water meters are at? Because that doesn't make sense.
I think all of them are connected to that Baharito. There's a pipe there, and all of them are connected there, or there's a big one there, and all of the other houses are connected.
You didn't pay a water bill, right?
Yes. And actually, there's, we're concerned because there might be a leak right now, but yeah. I have an address. I don't have an address. Let's see, I think it's 122 South Highway 181. I'll have to look into that and go back to the council.
Can you give me your phone number if I can follow up on that?
Sure.
I don't want, you want to give it to me now, or you want me right now?
I'll give it to you in a second.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I look forward to hearing back from y'all, because I was waiting for a call back, and I hadn't heard back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, hi. My name is Trey Jacobson. I'm with a firm in San Antonio called Golden Steves Coen &amp; Gordon. For the record, we're at 300 Condon Street there. We represent a property owner who could not be here today, and they regretted that. And they asked me to come and speak to you with regards to their property, which, for the record, is listed as property ID 22611, which is an annexation area S2, which is, of course, along the South 181 corridor near Katy Lane. It is a vacant tract, and it is for agricultural use at this time. They actually asked me to come and say that they support the annexation. They encourage you to pursue the continued annexation of the S2 area. Additionally, for the record, they wanted me to ask that the city seek in an expeditious manner to amend their Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, or the CCN, as you may refer to it, to extend the city utilities to those areas at the earliest opportunity to do, as they believe that will help promote further development, commercial development, specifically in the tax base of Forestville. Anyway, I just wanted to express our support and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Wondly. I live, well, I live in San Antonio, but my father's right off Goliad Road, which is considered part of the annexation. I've got a question. We've been there for quite a while. Anything we've wanted, we've had to pay, like the sewer, the water, we've had to pay double rates because we were outside the city. The old railroad had gone through there, and the city decided to put the hike and bike trail all the way to the golf course, which runs right through the middle of our property. We've had problems with people coming through the city, which, I'm not trying to stop growth or anything, but we've tried working with the city, talking with the city, and we keep getting conflicts between, well, you're not in the city, you're in the county. But then if I want to do something, I have to get city permits, because we're within the ETJ. And if there's somebody trespassing on my property, I have to call the county, or I have to call the city, because, like you say, there's a fine line right there. Anything we've wanted to do in the past few years, it's been like one hurdle after another. The city wants to take us into annexation. They say they're going to allow us to say exempt, agriculturally exempt. Are relationships going to get any easier? Are we going to be able to take advantage of anything without having to jump over hurdles every time we need something? Is it still going to be county that we need to talk to, or is it still going to be the city? I mean, you put the hike and bike trail, you spent over a million dollars redoing a county bridge so people can get across the creek that's back over there. But every time we want to, I mean, we tried to get the city to put the fences up along the hike and bike trail like they did inside the city limits, and to this day, nothing's been done. I still have people trespassing on my property who think they can come from the city and just go right down to the river and help themselves, and it's a free for all. I had people coming in from the golf course who live over there who had children going through the bike trails. Now, if they get snakebitten, who are they going to, who's going to help them? Do they call the county, do they call the city? Or do I go back there and find people, you know, who've been injured? And am I responsible for them? You know, that's just, there's just issues that I have concerns with, and I don't mind, you know, taking advantage and letting the city grow and everything. But I would like to know that if this is going to happen, that we do have some better working relations, and that we can try to work together and try to get things done without having to jump over so many hurdles. That's my concern.
Yes, sir. And I think Mrs. Turner can respond to that?
Yes. I know this property, EDC, provided some fencing prior to 2013. It is adjacent to it, and that is their fine line. Kelly has asked us to close up some of these loopholes in between, because it goes in and out, and hopefully, this annexation will address that.
The county commissioner originally closed it off, and nobody could go through there. And I was able to run cattle on that property. But since they opened up the hike and bike trail, I've lost, I'd have to sit down and calculate how much money I've lost, because I haven't been able to use that property to the full extent of running cattle on it, because I'm afraid they're going to get on the hike and bike trail and be in downtown Florisville, because we're no longer open, we're no longer open range. It's, you know, the city voted on county issues, and it's closed range, so I have to be responsible for my fences. And it's costing a lot of money to try to close and fix that all up, especially through the creeks and stuff. And I thought at one point, we were going to be able to work together, because the city wanted that area to go through to the hike and bike trail, to the golf course, to a park, but they haven't, we haven't been able to work together on this. And I just want to know if this is going to be through, how are we going to work this out together?
Well, they would have responsibilities, but please, you have to help me out first on reference to annexation and agriculture exempt. Do they still receive city services if they're agriculture exempt?
Yeah, so they're going to be inside of those areas still, so we'll still provide those city services out there. And so it should ease a lot of the issues that you've had going forward with who to call and where to go and things of that nature.
City services, like the water and stuff, we had to, we've had to pay double because we were outside the city. Those rates going to...
Right, and Chris, I'll let you, but you shouldn't have to pay double at that point, because you'll be considered inside the city. You'll still remain your exemption, though.
And I'd like to kind of see what the rates are going to be, because with the ag exemption, do our rates stay the same as far as taxes or...
Right, that wouldn't affect, oh, for taxes and things like that? I'm not sure on the tax calculation on there. That would have to go to the taxes that's included here, and they work off of that.
That's what I would like to know.
But it would still be taken into, your ag exemption would still be taken into account when doing the valuation on there. So it would still be much less, you wouldn't see for the full valuation of the property.
I'm glad against both, but I just want to be able to work together. That's my big thing.
And Chris, do you have anything to add on there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Angela Maisy. I'm the property owner of property ID number 41721. I'm respectfully requesting not to be involved in annexation. It's the only house on that street, so it's just kind of odd you annex one house. So, there's other, there's other issues that I talked to Chris about it already. He can fill you in. Don't want to take too much time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, Mr. Stewart, thank you for being here. My name is Keith Cologi. I'm actually a neighbor of Mr. Walpole, probably shadow a lot of the concerns that he has. Excuse me. One of the things that concerns us about annexation, and worries us, is, you know, of course, we live right across the street from Walmart. It just sort of came without warning to us and plumped right in our front yard. With us being annexed, our concerns are of any future potential rezoning or anything like that. I know it doesn't affect property owners until change of hands occurs, is at least what I understand. But let's say one of our neighbors decides, I'm going to sell this piece of property, and then the owner comes in and decides to put up a restaurant on it. As Mr. Walpole pointed out earlier, one of the things on our list is every weekend, more than every weekend, sometimes we're out in the front of County Road 131 picking up trash. We put up a field fence in front of our house to catch a lot of that. It's not one of my favorite things, but it does help clean it up and make it look nice and presentable. It's one thing I don't want to do. There's many, I have many things on my list. This is not, this is not a welcome item on my list. But these are our concerns. Another concern that we have is the extension of utilities. Right now, we have our own utilities, and I don't believe, it would be hard for me to believe that we would really necessitate having to take part in city extension of utilities. And where my concern comes in is the extension of the utilities are going to be paid by tax payer money from the city. And so if we're participating in that, we're not benefiting from that. And it would cost us money to benefit from that, because we'd have to extend our, we'd have to hook up to those utilities, and that costs money and time, and we're fine with the utilities that we have, and we just don't seem that that's very fair to us. And I know there's a lot of other property owners who could shadow that. The other question that I have is what are the plans for the expanding of services, and what is the phasing time? And this includes police department and other city services. They would obviously have to expand their operation in order for them to protect themselves and to, you know, expand their services throughout the community. So these are our concerns. I know you've taken a lot of this under consideration, and hopefully, none of this is a surprise. But we're, we don't necessarily want to be annexed. Another one of our concerns is what are the restrictions that would be placed on our property? I know there's probably a lot of questions to respond to, but if you could respond to some of that, I would really appreciate it.
I could respond to Highway 131. That's a county road. We don't have much to do with it. But Mrs. Turner, I mean, talked to the commissioner...
Council?
And he said, once you get an annex, he'd be happy to turn it over to the city, so the city will be able to start mowing it and get it picked up. That's in the works, because I, you know, I drive down that road in a plane all the time, but up here, he doesn't. So that's in the works. Rest is up. Mrs. Turner and...
Well, I believe Mr. Stewart can speak to the service plan. Sewer, talk about water, sewer, electricity. He can speak to the sewer and service plan.
So there were a couple of questions. I was trying to make some notes as you were speaking, so if I missed something, give me a little reminder. First of all, you were asking about the idea of somebody else coming in nearby with, putting a business, like a restaurant or something like that, and that you would have, you were concerned about what voice you would have in how that happened. Once you're inside the city limits, then you're subject to, your property as well as other properties around you are subject to the city's zoning codes. So if somebody wants to change the zoning on their property, then by our ordinances, we have to send notification out to everybody within 200 feet, and there is a process for considering the rezoning that goes through planning a zoning commission and then to the council. So at that point, you would have a direct voice and even a voice of legal protest if it was something that you strongly objected to. So that's with regards to zoning. And those are, that's a right that you currently don't have as somebody in the ETJ. As far as the utilities goes, it kind of depends, with water, it depends on who your water service provider is right now. If you're Florisville Water, or if you're Oak Hill, or if you're SS, if you're Caposa. There's, okay, there's nothing that's, there's no requirement that you immediately convert over to city water. It provided you're continuing what you're doing.
Point clarity? Yes, sir. Just to clarify, it's not a matter of whether or not we'll be forced to use city utilities. It's a matter of, it's, we're going to be paying, we're going to be in that tax realm that we need paying for the extension of services that we are not participating in. It seems unfair to us.
It may be, and I'm going to assume for the time being that you would be within Florisville's CCN, within Florisville Service Area. You may not be receiving that exemption immediately, but over time, as a taxpayer, as the city prioritized all of the utility projects throughout the city, when a certain project came forward as being the next one on the list, at that point, you would be beneficiary of it. And that's kind of, that's the mechanism by which cities have grown and have grown their utility networks. New development where there's a change in the intensity of the use that requires more utilities, that's customarily a cost that's borne by the developer, because that new need is attributable to that development. But over time, the area that you're in is going to eventually see water service. And the same goes with sewer service. If sewer service, and we do have sewer service in that area, and if you are currently on a septic system, you don't, you're not required to immediately connect. I just want to, I know that wasn't necessarily your question, but again, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood. You're not immediately required to abandon your septic system and connect. If your septic system does fail to a point that's where it's going to cost more than 50% of the value to repair it, and you have sewer service within 500 feet, then you would be required to exempt. But otherwise, you would not be required to relinquish your septic system or close it out. As far as restrictions on property, there are a number of codes that the city administers from land use, like I talked about with the zoning, to building codes, fire codes, those kinds of things, but also animal control, weed, and, I can't remember how we have it referenced in the code.
The nuisance law?
The nuisance items. So weeds and rubbish and trash and loud music and those kinds of things. So... from land use, like I talked about with the zoning, to building codes, fire codes, those kinds of things. But also animal control, weed and, I can't remember how we have it referenced in the code.
The nuisance law?
The nuisance items. So weeds and rubbish and trash and loud music and those kinds of things. So you'll be subject, you'll be subject to that as a property owner. But you'll also have a voice in knowing that your neighbor is subject to them too. If you do have an issue, then you can, you can engage with enforcement with that. So I hope that answers most of your questions. And if I forgot something, I'll be there.